So, I don't know what purpose they would have for it. So she went to, she went to care here, and they gave her an armband. She never did that, right? So she was fine.
She was never asked off?
No. And there was no fees associated with hospital or care, or, sorry, walk-in or anything? She went to care here and regular care appointment, and they gave her an armband for like a test elbow. Basically, she hyped her. But, I don't know what, I don't know what they need for it. I don't know what they're gonna do with anybody. Where are they gonna go after the juvenile for the cost? I don't know, they send it. So, you could see it because she's, she has certified from lunch with us, but they couldn't use it for any charge. They've been showing my health, they couldn't give them work. So, in my opinion, I don't know why they would. I think we look at resisting because she needs me to bear, I don't think it was in the process, but...
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your city council meeting, February 6, 2018, 6 o'clock PM. And we're going to stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Tillet.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, we have a bull call.
Mayor Jerome?
Here.
Ms. Hope?
Here.
Ms. Tillet?
Here.
Mr. Robson?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Crell?
Here.
Mr. Massey?
Here.
Thank you.
Now's the time for public comments, and this will be the time, come up, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address, and, and any questions hopefully be answered with, we can maybe answer some tonight, but it'll be on the website within 14 days. And with that, I have Vicki Blake.
Hello, Vicki Blake, 1-9051 US Highway 441, Mount Dora. I'm here to, I want to let you guys know that the Mount Dora Half Marathon Race Committee, we put in a bid to do the race for the Wakava 5K, and we, we got it. So we're directing the Wakava Parkway 5K. It's a one, one-time deal, obviously. They're doing it as a christening, and it's on March 31st. It's on the section of the road that they're gonna be opening, so I just wanted to let everybody know. Come out, and there's gonna be a ribbon-cutting, it's a five-mile stretch. And I also wanted to, I know I only have three minutes, I'll talk fast. Where the race has been so successful, it's a bad problem to have a little extra money. But I was visiting with a friend, and he lives in Mount Dora, said, you know, your race doesn't really benefit the people that live here. And I'm like, what do you mean? You know, it promotes health and fitness, you know, many, but it really doesn't benefit the people that are living there. And I want to know if there's a fund to make a donation, maybe to offset some of the members that maybe are underserved, or their electric bills, or anything like that, if there's something like that. You don't have to answer now, but I just wanted to put it out there. We have some extra money. We were happy that we're giving so much back to the community and reinvesting in the race, but I kind of wanted to, like, that hit a light bulb with me. Really doesn't benefit the people that don't run, they're inconvenienced, they're boxed in, so I wanted to just share that. And also, I don't know if there's any business owners here, but we want to get the, the community more involved with the half marathon. It is become quite of an event, and we have very little support from businesses, local businesses, or even participants. We had about 100 people out of, out of 2,000 from Mount Dora actually do the race, and no local, hardly any local businesses. They're all insurance companies from out of town, or Dunkin' Donuts, you know, kind of outside sponsors. So we want to offer five free, you know, participation in, if anybody's a business owner, just contact me. We usually charge for our expo the day before the race. You can promote your own business, you got a race, we do a virtual goodie bag, we do a, you know, a hard copy goodie bag, but we usually charge for that. And so I want to offer, you know, five businesses, locally owned businesses, to be part of our race, whether it's a shoe store, or a restaurant, or a massage business, or a hair class, it doesn't matter, a, a Mount Dora own business, so, I don't know, time's up, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we get a contact number for Vicki?
Sure. I can get a little, it's on my card.
Beth Pelosi, did I pronounce that correct?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time.
Name and address, please.
My name is Beth Pelosi. I live at 408 Magnolia Ending in Dogwood Mountain Reserve, and I am the president of the ARB. So on behalf of the ARB, that's why I'm here.
And just to track up, we have, we have Dogwood Mountain on the agenda, and we only take, I didn't notice that what it was for here, and we only do comments for items that are not on the agenda, and Dogwood Mountain is on the agenda, and we're gonna be discussing it later.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll just, and then we'll have, we'll, we'll take a comment from you at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
She just took the time to come up here, so thank you.
And Mayor, I would just say that it says man, manor, and it should say mountain, it was just typo for that, so we're sorry.
I'm sorry. Anybody else wish to address the, the council, and then the item not on our agenda tonight?
Chrissy Stiles, 216 Dogwood Place. I have two quick things. I don't know if I'm allowed to sort of advertise something, but it's very Mount Dora related. I have a book signing next Friday night with someone who grew up in Mount Dora. She was on the Today Show this morning promoting her book. She was in the CIA. She went to Triangle Elementary, went to Mount Dora Middle School, graduated from Taverius High Schools, and now has a book out. So, February 16th, 6:00 PM at my store, she'll be there to talk and do a book signing. I know, I mean, it's been very cool, her response has been awesome. Her name's Michelle Rigby, married name is Assad, so Michelle Rigby Assad. Very good book, too. And it's totally free. The book's called Breaking Cover. She was on Megyn Kelly this morning, you can pull it up online. Good interview. The second thing is, also, I don't remember when, but a few months ago, I realized, and I spoke with Robin about this, that they took our recycling dumpsters away, and, not that I don't believe Robin, and when she helped me and explained it to me, but we've apparently gone to single-stream, oh, that mug, uh, single-stream recycling.
It's distracting.
It is distracting. Which is, and I'm not a Patriots fan, everything goes into one dumpster now, and recycling is very near and dear to my heart, and not that I don't believe that it's being separated, but I kind of don't believe it's being separated. Because then why at home do we have two cans? You know what I mean? So I called Waste Management, and the girl was not helpful at all, and said, "Single-stream recycling is cheaper," and blah, 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 but I would just like to know for sure that, or if there's something we can do to start really recycling in Mount Dora again. There's a lot of cardboard and bottles and et cetera going in that dumpster.
We are working on that still to, to provide you the additional dumpster you have once before, so there'll probably be a, a work session in the near future to, to talk about it, and have Waste Management come in. They, they are part of our, we are part of their stream, uh, single-street, uh, stream recycling program, but we do realize the need for, for tool. We've got to figure out how we're gonna put multiple dumpsters back in those locations, and we're doing that as part of the total parking, you know, we're, we're looking at, looking at resurancing the parking lot, so all that kind of plays into one.
Okay. And to get people to actually separate the trash.
That would be great, too. And to break down the boxes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? And I just brought my cup out here today, not anything, but just has eagles on there, but it's... Hey, it's been a hard time there, being an Eagles fan for a lot of years, but, okay, we have some, we have some very nice presentations tonight, which we're going to get into right now, and, thanks, Vice Mayor, would you care to join me out front here?
Thank you.
And, this is Mayor Baler. And we're going to do a, let's bring, let's bring the camera back here. Okay, this is for the, this is for, this is for honorary K-9 Mayor Baler, and this, real quick, this is a program put on by our police department for our, in all proceeds going to the Heroes Foundation, and this thing's cutting out right here, so, um, let me just, we're just trying to talk out loud a little bit over here. The program's put on by our police department and for Heroes Foundation. Votes come in, you get to vote for the K-9 of your choice, it's $10 a vote, and, and Baler got the most, got the most votes for this program. But so, now, we're going to try to do this, and, I, Taylor.
Taylor.
Do solemnly wolf, that I will serve as a good ambassador. But I will support, protect, and defend all pets, and the citizens of Mount Dora against all enemies, domestic or foreign, and I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same, that I will faithfully perform all the duties of the K-9 Mayor Office upon which I am about to enter. And congratulations, Baler, on your achievement.
Just not the vice mayor.
Okay, you got to see everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Ivy, thank you. For those of you who aren't aware, but I'm sure most of us are, Ivy is the one who advocates all of the challenges, including putting one on each side, to do the program, as she does with many other programs for us here in the town. So I have the pleasure of meeting Winter. Come here, Winter. Not fall, not summer, not spring, Winter.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Winter, Winter. I, Winter, do solemnly wolf, that I will serve as a good ambassador. I will support, protect, and defend all pets, and citizens of Mount Dora against all enemies, domestic or foreign, and I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same. I will faithfully perform all of the duties of K-9 Mayor Office upon which I am entering as the Vice Mayor when the Mayor is not available. February 6, 2018, way to go, Winter. Can we get a call? Roseanne's over there working, there we go, got her. She's one of the few that can get you to do it.
I made the album, because she worked for the cops. I'm scared of the police department.
Start off with eagles and then some dogs, okay.
You slipped one.
I just, just can't help, can't help myself. All right, have a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have consent agenda, have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of two minutes, sets of minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public hearing says, Resolution Number 2018 dash 07, Waterman Village Preliminary Plan Unit Development, and Ms. Cockcroft, do we have the title read, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Resolution Number 2018 dash 07, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, approving a preliminary development plan, planned unit development entitled Waterman Village, providing for the adoption of recitals and findings, providing for the implementing administrative actions, providing for a preliminary PUD master plan, terms and conditions, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This packet has been presented to the Planning and Zoning Board on January 17, 2018. DRC received this packet on December 21st of 2017, and approved it both boards. Our Planning Development Director, Ben Sandersfeld, will come up and give you a brief overview before we turn it over to the applicants who are here tonight to represent their project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ben Sandersfeld, Planning and Development Department. The request from, is a petition for a preliminary plan unit development. This is just south of US Highway 441, on the east side of Donley Street. It's gonna be a companion retirement full-service facility of the Waterman Village on the west side. The project details will include a memory care facility, 48 beds, there's an independent living, 170, there's duplex, quadruplex, similar to what the existing facility contains. There'll be 240 units for the senior housing, and this is just shy of 37 acres site. The project, as you may be familiar with, has a center pond area, and that'll be the highlight for the development with the buildings around it in two phases. The access will be off of Donley. There is a future connection to the north that'll help assist ingress, egress, to future development to the east. The project has some wetlands and some floodplain characteristics. This is a preliminary, so the future uses will be the retirement community outlined in the master plan. The next step is to submit the final master plan. One of the components to this is access, as I mentioned, with the west side. The applicant's proposal includes a concept of either a pedestrian bridge over Donley. Staff and planning commission seem to like that idea, in favor, it could act as a gateway. There could be opportunities for us to enhance with other sort of cities, that, that type of image and branding and, and cooperation with the developer. Or they propose adding a signal. This is preliminary master plan, so we'd have to check the engineering, the configuration, the distribution, there's a lot of engineering on that aspect. And the third option is maybe a bus going across. So, we're in favor of a pedestrian bridge, a sort of access, maybe could serve the two facilities that we're thinking it would not be public, could be for just the residents, maybe their cop cars could go back and forth, as sort of a feature of this project. I just want to mention the previous master plan of a sunset. This will take over the program, if and so adopted, and this will run the program in the two-phase section. With that said, planning commission recommended approval, along with the Development Committee and staff recommend support of the proposed preliminary master plan.
We have to go through a process here, Mr. Harmon, and, and the, next, we have to have the applicant come up and, and state their ideas on the whole project, and then we open up for public hearing, then we'll go to discussion.
Mr. Green is available.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Green.
My name's Tim Green, President Green Consulting Group, 470 United Avenue, Mount Dora, Florida. I'm a certified planner and a registered landscape architect, and I represent the, I am the applicant for the project representing Waterman Communities. As staff has informed you, this is 36.97 acres to be built in two phases, consisting of three different living styles with the duplex, quads, which are shown in, on the outside, and the orange on this colored drawing. Independent living would be an four-story buildings with a commons area between those, and then we have 24 beds in the first phase of memory care. Second phase, we'd have 18 duplex slash quads, so they're really independent living, and then 75 independent in the apartment-type buildings, and then 24 beds for memory care in that. Project always, also includes a 1.75 acres of right-of-way dedication across the north so that there can be a connection from United Southern Bank through the properties down to this property and across the Donley Street. So we'd actually have another connection way to get from 441 to Donley Street other than going to the light. So that, that would be with future development as it occurs to this project's east, but that would be dedicated as a public right-of-way and built by the developer to city standards. The bridge has been discussed, as a gateway, bridge has been discussed, obviously to connect the two sides of this project, and, you know, we've, we've discussed with staff, if this was Tim's community, not Waterman's community, there would be no discussion about a bridge or gateway because the two connection projects would have no linkage at all, or requirement of a linkage. So we're discussing how to do that with this PUD. This obviously could be advantageous for residents who live there to get back and forth across Donley Street. I'm here for any questions, details, or anything that you might have that I might be able to answer on the present. We have a whole team here also.
Looking up for questions, I'm Mr. Harmon first.
I have a question, Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
You may wish to defer this to the planning, but my concern was that I understand, and I'm a newcomer to this community, that there is a historical significance to the name of the lake. The plans show Lake Margaret, and I believe to long-term Mount Dorians, that's known as Fiddler's Pond, and it is referenced, is referenced in many of the historical books that address the Mount Dora history. It was a part, feature, I think, of the part that goes up from Mount Dora. There are people who've been here for a long, long time.
I know, that was an ask of me by staff. I can only go by what the surveyor puts on the plan, and it's called Lake Margaret on surveys.
That's, that's what I thought it was, to be appropriate to the staff.
We'll name it, if appropriate, I, we.
Mr. Sanders.
We get to name a lake, that would be cool.
Can you please provide the council your information?
Ben Sandersfeld, various student questions, as we picked that up during the review as well, whose staff recognizes this Fiddler's Pond. I think during the final plan and the memorialization of the plaids, we can, we can research that a little further and identify the appropriate history for that. Be glad to do that.
You are familiar with it?
We are familiar with that.
I'm gonna suggest that anyone who's not, if you want to look it up on Wikipedia, you'll find it, because it references more in history of this area.
So when we go through plating, we'll be able to identify that, it's a proper label.
That would be appropriate.
Mr. Tillet?
Just, when do you anticipate that Phase Two will start becoming a reality? Just out of curiosity.
I think we have in our, in the document before you, a, a start date of no more than two years after the final, the last building is built in Phase One. Hopefully, it'll go as one project seamlessly through, and you'll never know there was a Phase Two. But we have to have some stop point for financial considerations, we're paying for this, for the financial factors.
And there, and, and each of the memory support units houses 24?
24 beds, yes.
Guests?
Those are, those are licensed.
This type of a facility, I know to get access to Waterman now, there's quite a long waiting list.
I believe there is a waiting list of over 100.
Yep, and so, the, it certainly, my view, would provide a significant portion of the responding to that need, and not only that, it's obviously a view of the project from a look standpoint, or from a quality standpoint, it seems to me, but I wanted to verify that there is a definite need.
There is a need, yes.
PMZ considered this, so, thank you.
Mr. Sandersfeld, can you come up one second? I had a question asked in reference to the, the 60-feet height in the four stories. Are there any restrictions in this area, or anything in this area that we need to think about with going forward with that?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hayes. Sure, maybe highlighted, performance standard changes, which includes like some wall poppers and the PUD, and the height in this can be modified through this plan unit development. It has a residential land use, and that's consistent with our comp plan. There are different districts, or the height requirement is limited, but this doesn't come in play when you propose a PUD. That is part of the negotiation and compatibility. When you look at that in terms of the commercial to the north, that could go 65 in the C Street. This is adjacent to that, to the north, and potentially to the east. So that land use compatibility with the highest district of a four-story building with a gable roof would be compatible, and it would fit the critical mass of that site, because the buildings are gonna be placed back from Donley. So really, perspective view, you're not gonna see that height up front, like an urban environment, could be more of a campus-style view, so we feel the 60 feet is in thing. Long with an explanation, our comp plan does allow, land development does allow to the preliminary PUD kind of, but.
Any other questions for council? See none right now. Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, and back for some discussion, anybody else? Fine, here we go. And, I'll set the, the vote?
I move, well, I move, I move approval of 2018, yes, 07.
Okay, and again, just anybody from the public who's to address this item? You've seen none? Ms. Johnson, we have a bull call, go, please.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillet?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Crell?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Resolution Number 2018 dash 11, aim to purchase our personnel protection, personal protection equipment for the fire department. Ms. Cockcroft, can we have the title read, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 2018 dash 11, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Dora, authorizing a biggie-back contract... of Mount Door, Florida, authorizing a piggyback contract with Municipal Equipment Company, LLC, for the purchase, purchase of firefighting personal protective equipment, providing for legislative filings and intent, providing authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, and providing for discrepancies areas, conflict severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, this item is for our personal protective equipment for the fire department. Um, because I don't have the opportunity very often to invite Chief Greiner up, I'd like to give him a few moments to explain this if he'll come up, Chief. I will tell you, this total package is about eighty-three thousand. Some of this, uh, in some cases, obviously, he's mentioned in here, there's some fire assessment fees associated with this as far as the payment of some of this. I believe you mentioned that in your memo.
I believe this all comes out of fire assessment fee, so it doesn't affect the PUD in any way.
Right, so, uh, can you go over some of the equipment and the, and the reasoning for some of the equipment?
Sure. Uh, so the jacket and the pants are the largest part of the product. Uh, all of our bunker gear is a three-layer product. The middle layer is a moisture barrier, so you don't get steam burns when you're putting water on fire. The inner and the outer layers are for thermal protection, so it has kind of a double role of both trying to keep all of the heat on the outside from passing through to the inside while simultaneously, simultaneously letting body heat on the inside get out, so that you don't wind up overheated from your own body temperature, which is kind of a tough balancing act to work on there. Um, the inner layer also has the material that stays very, very dry and slippery, so you can get it on and off even when you're really sweaty, so it's not like trying to put on a wet sock. Um, the outside has to be very durable, abrasion resistant, cut resistant, because you wouldn't want it to cut and break your thermal cover. So it's pretty sophisticated material. Um, the outside is a P V I material, if that means anything to you, it's a pretty high-tech fabric. Um, that's a pretty big challenge for any garment, but when you try and incorporate that into a boot or a glove where you still have to have dexterity, it becomes really a challenge for the manufacturer, but that's why there's a cost. Um, a couple of the other things that are in here that you might have taken notice of are the cancer prevention parts of it. Um, cancer has become a, a big challenge for firefighters. One of the things you'll notice in here, there are two hoods for every set of gear. That's one of the areas where we found that, um, our studies have found that that's a indicator or a, a risk for thyroid cancer, so close around here. So there are two hoods in there. One of the things that Ms. Hayes had asked about was an escape pack. So the idea there is if you were trapped or got separated from an exit by a fire, you'd have a way to bail out of a three or four-story window, that kind of thing. So it's a, a small amount of webbing and a descending device that's built right into the pants. Um, it's a pretty cool little device. It's a double brake escape artist. I could talk for a long, long time. I like this stuff, so stop me, but, um, I hope that answers your question, I'm free to it.
Thank you.
Okay, have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
And any comments, questions from council? Anybody from the public wish to, to address this issue? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Tillet?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
With the objection with the, with the council mind, if I put number four, uh, number one since can't be in here, who would like to address this?
Objection.
Um, let's discuss Dogwood Manor update.
No. No.
Dogwood Manor.
I know.
No?
Uh, let me get to that, please.
You guys, take your time. Which I have to work, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Peters, I think he's in the other room, over in the chamber. Can you see if he's over there, please? It's okay. I think just he was waiting over there because it was a little mouse.
Thank you, so Mayor John Peters, our Director of Public Works, will give you an update on Dogwood Mountain, um, and, um, again, open it for any discussion, but we just felt like having this as an update, which is why you don't have a memo on this particular item, and John can give you the latest information. Thank you, sir.
Um, we met with the St. John's River Water Management District, um, week and a half ago, uh, to discuss the permitting process that we will have to go through for the Dogwood Mountain. We have worked, in addition to the cleanup work, uh, down in the wetland area, we had a very productive meeting, uh, which actually went better than I expected. Um, so, from that standpoint, we're in good shape that the next meeting, we will be bringing a council report for our consultant to continue with that permitting process now that we know what it entails. Um, in the meantime, we have been working with the contractor that we approved back in December. Uh, we have sent paperwork to the USDA for potential, um, federal funding. Uh, it's our understanding that that has gone through the review process. Uh, the last we heard is that the funding may be included in the February eighth, uh, federal funding, uh, bill, uh, before Congress. Uh, so we await that vote on Thursday. Um, in the meantime, uh, we still have the potential, if the USDA does not come through, which, let me back up just a second. USDA has a higher percentage of federal dollars as opposed to local dollars, that's the one we wanted to go for first. Uh, then we can back up to the FEMA reimbursement, and then we have the, uh, FEMA mitigation grant that goes to the state. There are three options. Um, one of the problems that we have is every single one of them have a requirement, we can't spend money on construction until we're through. If we spend money on construction before approval, we negate the ability to get the federal dollars. So, I know the residents are concerned. Um, I am concerned because, you know, we're getting closer and closer to the rainy season. Typically, we consider rainy season around here being June fifteenth. Um, we're getting ready to get into, uh, dry season with true dry season mid-March, uh, so we're just, uh, we're monitoring it every day. Uh, we've had discussions of what we could do if it starts to fail even more, and we have some ideas, um, but hopefully we will get to that point. Uh, but the, uh, the good news is the retention pond is holding, uh, its water level has been good. We've been able to divert dome water into the retention pond and not over the, uh, the area to watch. Unfortunately, we have had about another, uh, depending on where you look, anywhere from three to eight feet of additional washout, uh, but we still have one lane of traffic, um, that could get by to the one resident. Um, but, uh, let's just have a finger crossed that on Thursday, we hear something favorable on the federal funding, uh, and we can get started, um, on June, on, on February twentieth, we will have the council report for Pegasus to continue working on the permit stuff, uh, hopefully, if everything goes well, we can be under construction by March.
Mr. Peters, can you give an update on the engineering piece that, um, that was taking place and the St. John's piece that's been involved in this?
On Dogwood Mountain?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, we have, um, done survey work, uh, to, uh, show the limits of the damage. Um, we have a, a subconsultant who will go in, um, in the next few weeks and do some boring to determine the depth of material that's in the wetland. Uh, we will have to remove all the material, save about six inches. Uh, they feel like that the vegetative material can come up through the last six inches of the material, we don't want to be determining the vegetation. Um, the, uh, contractors engineer have been working closely with Pegasus. Uh, they have the design of the, uh, the wall, uh, that will go in, for lack of a better word. It, uh, it's rather complicated, but it's microfoundations that go down into the ground about fifteen, twenty feet. It's a combination, it's basically a gabian basket wall, uh, that's tied to those micro, um, pilings, uh, so it's a very stable, um, design, uh, that will keep us out of the wetland area and yet maintain a full cul-de-sac. Uh, I'll go back and remind you that in the very beginning, we had discussed the possibility of removing the cul-de-sac and putting in a basic key turnaround and blew up. Uh, we were told by all the federal agencies, we have to replace in time. Uh, so it was not an option to go with something that was less intrusive in terms of embankment and all, so that's why we are where we are.
The only other thing I, I just like to make sure that is mentioned to the council, um, we originally presented, um, a possible piggyback with a federal company to do the work, um, and?
G S I.
Yes, um, and any more progress on that or any information so the council would be?
Um, G S I is in a holding pattern until we find out about federal dollars. Uh, they have done quite a bit of engineering, uh, in preparation for, uh, Pegasus has been involved in the review of that. Um, there've been several meetings between them, uh, but at this point, we're quickly in a holding pattern until we find out about the federal dollars.
Ms. Posey, would you mind coming up and, and giving your comments?
I would like to thank Mr. Peters especially for his hard work. I know that the council has been very concerned, uh, in regard to our community, uh, several council people we've been in touch with, and, um, on behalf of the homeowners, I'd like to thank everyone who has been involved. But the, the questions we have, um, are, uh, again, it, it gets down to that funding issue, and it sounds like first one funding has to take place before the next. Uh, so there is a, whichever one is, the best one is the one we want to get, correct? And, um, hopefully that will go well, as Mr. Peters had just explained. Uh, the other, uh, issues we, um, are, well, I would like to ask about is, um, how does the city, uh, is the city considering anything in regards to Mrs. Andrews' home? Uh, when they start work there, she is down, I don't know how many of you have been out to the site, but her house is just there, and every day, I'm on the phone back and forth with, you know, my concerns with her, not every day, but often, and I see her every day going back and forth. She's not, she's not really that young, she's, you know, a little bit older than I am, and it is a concern. The, the concern is the equipment's going to be in there, the road will not be accessible. If they come in through the property above on the side of our house, that's going to be an issue because that's already been compromised with the, uh, the water drainage system. So, that's an issue that we really are concerned in, uh, ourselves with. Uh, the other issue is that, um, you're talking about the wetlands on that lot. The wetlands that are, okay, are they buildable, those lots? I was told, again, it's a rumor, the two lots beside where the, uh, the collapse happened, somehow they interfere with the wetlands, are they buildable? Does anyone know?
Mr. Peter, could you have another question?
Um, the first question was regard to, um, uh, construction access and, uh, the Lake McAndrews. Um, we have been in constant contact with McAndrews. Uh, her primary concern is when construction actually begins, and we have assured her that we, through the contractor, us, and whomever, uh, we will make reasonable accommodations to have her be somebody somewhere else, um, because we do not want a situation where we may have to take part of the road out in order to create a stable work environment and therefore interfere with her access. So, we're in constant communication with her on that. Mark Radowski, uh, in the Public Works Department, has been serving and do well with, uh, uh, confidant for her, uh, they have established a very nice relationship and she's very comfortable calling him. Um, with regard to the access to the, um, uh, retention areas, part of what we discussed with St. John, to the original permit for the subdivision originally envisioned the drainage going across the road, further uphill from the cul-de-sac, and then angling down into the wetland area. At some point, the contractor modified the plan and put the pipe where it is, which was probably the work location it should go because it went right through a very deep, unstable, uh, embankment, and that's what caused the failure. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna replicate what the original science saw for, move the pipe. Uh, if you've been out there, there's some asphalt burns across the road, uh, where the burn that's closest to the road is pretty close to where the pipe will go across, then we will angle back down to the, uh, uh, the wetland area. That angled area will become the access road to get to the, uh, construction zone. We will not be going through people's backyards or anything, we will access it from Magnolia Ending. We have been in contact with our, um, uh, land acquisition specialist, Ed Barfield, uh, with regards to the three properties. Uh, there's two of them before you get to the failed area, and then there's a lot actually in the failed area. Um, as I have said several times, uh, you never say that something's not buildable, uh, there will always be an engineer that will find a way to build, um, it might be fifty-foot stills, but it can be built. Um, but, you know, the key is it will have to be a stable environment. The property owner has, uh, indicated the possibility of maybe buying him out. Um, he bought the property, uh, for unusual circumstances, he just wants to get out even. Uh, so I've had some conversation with the city manager. As we get a little further along, we will make a determination as to what's best approach, and we will come back to council with a recommendation at that time. Uh, so I think that answered your question, didn't it?
And the stability of Mrs. Andrews' house, where is that standing?
The stability of Mrs. Andrews' house, as part of the evaluation and survey work that Pegasus did, um, we took the lowest point in the, uh, the slide area and basically put it on a four-to-one slope, which is extremely stable, sloping, flooded with sand. Uh, it hit the bottom of her driveway, so, uh, she should be in fine shape, but we are constantly monitoring it, and if we see a slope slipping toward her property, then we will recommend that she move out. Uh, but that is part of the constant monitoring we're doing, uh, in this particular case, and that's part of that ongoing con- conversation between Mark Radowski and McAndrews.
One more question. You were mentioning something about, um?
Google search.
It was mentioned that she would be, Mrs. Andrews would be relocated in some way?
What, what I said was that part of our conversation with her is she has expressed concern with being there during construction, and we had talked to her that we will make arrangements during construction for her not to have to be here.
Okay, and is that going to be part of, is she going to have to pay for that? I was just curious.
No, ma'am, that would be part of what we would work out.
Okay.
FEMA also steps in on some of that because of there's relocation required, FEMA also helps. Um, in fact, the, one of the requirements would be the fact that she would need to apply for that assistance. So if she hasn't, I'm sure Mr. Radowski will reach out to her. Um, and then the other, um, challenge that we'll have, and we'll bring that back to council, will be the purchase of the land. We don't know if any of the programs will pay for that, or if that'll be a city function, so that's something we'll bring back to you. We, we hear both sides of it. Um, sometimes when you speak to one person, they believe that it could be included as part of the retrofit, so to speak, and then we hear others, so we will bring that back to you at a later point. A lot of it is determined whether or not the USDA program works for us. Um, if it does, they may consider it more so than the FEMA program.
Okay, um, I do hope it moves along quickly because it really has changed even in the last week, uh, over there, you know, it's, I encourage all of you to go up there often. It's, it's very frightening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Krail?
Um, I, I appreciate everything Mr. Peters, Mr. Radowski, everybody, um, has done, and I also appreciate the, the patience of the residents there on Magnolia Endings. I, I do wonder, though, um, at, at what point i- is there some process to declare an imminent emergency that could, um, allow us to, to start work and get reimbursed later, um, or at what point do we say we just better get going because, um, situation is unsafe and?
About March fifteenth. That quick enough answer? Um, that's what we've been doing, if we've been looking into July, June fifteenth, and we've been keeping track of weather on, on a spreadsheet that we do for our wastewater plant. Um, you can almost set the clock, June fifteenth is when the rain season starts, and it might vary a week or two, a, a week one way or the other. Uh, so we backed off three months, that's March fifteenth. So, um, we're getting close to critical points, and, uh, you know, the, the key is, um, hopefully on the And, uh, you know, the, the key is, um, hopefully on the, uh, the February eighth funding bill from Congress, the problem will be solved. Um, if not, then we're gonna have to have a serious conversation about at what point the city just say, uh, you know, what we, you know, based on past experience, what would be helpful for us to get with our congressional and our senate delegation from federal government. Uh, they can work out some dispensation from the federal government to allow us to go ahead and do work with the understanding we can be reimbursed later. But that's a process that we need to, you know, once Thursday passes, then we need to make a decision one way or the other. And one other bit of information, we are planning to have a neighborhood meeting, uh, next week, uh, with the residents out there to give them an update because we have commented that we would update them each month.
Do we have a date now for that?
Not sure, but I will make sure you get an email.
Okay, thanks.
And I would just say that, you know, as anything that we bring to you for approval, um, if we have to start the project without FEMA approval or USDA, we just have to make sure that we understand that we may not be reimbursed for that $2 million. So, it would just be something...
I was gonna ask how much.
Two millions on the high end. Um, I know some of it...
I think the low end is 1.25 and two million at the high end. So, it's a pretty good point.
A lot of my...
It's a lot of money, yes, yes. Um, and, and what we're running into, what we've seen, um, across the state from the FEMA reports, everything's been going toward the high end, not the low end. So, we, um, the luck of the draw has just been that, so. And I think Mr. Peters could agree with that.
Ms. Doyle.
How, how long, excuse me, assuming that, let's just assume worst case on, on Thursday and we end up with another continuing resolution.
Right.
Assuming we have to move to the federal FEMA level, how long would it, does it take to get a, an, an initial approval of funding? And do we have to wait for the funds to actually come in or do, because I know that that can take like five years and that's, um, obviously unacceptable, can we then start? But, but what's the lag time between the time that we say, okay, USDA has let us down, now we need to go to the next step?
Okay, we're talking about three different funds and they have three totally different answers, so I'll try to do all three quick.
Well, just, just a, just a swag.
It can be quick. Um, unlike some of the people I work with, think I don't talk quick, but I'll try here. Um, the, the USDA process, February eighth is pretty much gonna be the deciding factor. The FEMA reimbursement for the hurricane stuff, uh, we have already submitted the paperwork on that. Uh, we could go ahead and begin the process. The, the reimbursement may take five years.
Right, but at least...
And then the third one is the grant, the mitigation grant. And unfortunately, that's a competitive grant on the state level. Um, and it takes time. And I'm not sure that's really gonna work for it. Um, but, um, the USDA is obviously the best right now because we would not be out of pocket nearly as much. And the key there, we just need notice the funding is gonna prove and then we can start.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Olson, Ms. O...
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm assuming if you, if it helps, that we would be willing as a council to need the forty-eight hours notice to draft some emergency resolution or some high-powered. We need it now to give to our congressional delegation and our state delegation, everybody that needs that. This is an emergency in response to Councilman Krail's comments. Uh, I, I would suggest if that will help, drafting some quick emergency urgent resolution from the city, uh, if that will help. If it won't help, don't waste the time, but it's just an idea.
Thank you.
Well, it, it seems to me that Thursday is the day that we're gonna know one way or the other about the USDA. Is that correct?
Well, I'm bent knee crying yesterday.
Okay, so if we have an answer one way or the other then, we either go with the positive that we got it and we can get moving? Or if we don't, then we've already applied for FEMA, so then we can go ahead and start knowing we didn't get that because FEMA we know is not gonna pay for a while. But, we would then have to find the money to go ahead.
Right, and what we would do is we would begin, FEMA has already, we, we've already gone through the first initial couple of phases of approval on the FEMA side. Obviously, they haven't finished everything. Um, the mitigation information just came out this past week, so we would go ahead and apply for the mitigation grant, so that's not an issue. Um, but we would bring back to you at the twentieth, so that would just be the following week, we'd bring back to you the, uh, requirements or the request to go forward and do the work. And in the meantime, we would still contact our FEMA office, uh, make sure there's, there's anything else we need to submit to begin the work, that we can submit that. So, we, we have been, we've gone through the county perspective and we've gone, obviously, the city perspective to the county perspective, submitted to the state, but we had, all the paperwork has not been finalized through the county and state yet for FEMA. It's all been submitted, but it's not all complete. Not from our side, from their side.
So... So we...
Yes, and it could take months for the approval. They'll let you go ahead and do, go forward with the work, but they, they will still come back and start asking us for receipts. They may come back and ask for additional paperwork and then information, the, the normal.
But we can start.
We can start.
So, then if I'm understanding everything correctly, February twenty-second is the day we're gonna know which way we need to do based on our discussion here at council and so they could then begin on the twenty-third.
February twentieth, we'll bring it to the council.
Or February twentieth, whatever our meeting is, so...
As part of the consulting contract with Pegasus, we will give you an update at that time where we are from a funding standpoint. And, um, we may in fact have to do a separate resolution at the last minute because of the way things change.
Right, but we have the, I guess what I'm trying to get to is what is the latest date that we can allow, that, that we can confidently within reason, um, let the homeowners know that we can move forward no matter where we are if we've done all we can do? That's what I'm trying to get to.
February twentieth, we'll bring to you a package.
So, February twentieth, we should have a package. And when we get done with our discussion and whatever action we take, we should then set you all loose.
Any other comments?
Just, just one more thing, and I, I think Mr. Olson definitely on to something. Um, let's give our congressional delegation a chance to be heroes here. Um, let's get in touch with both senators, our congressman, the dog catcher, whoever else might be in play here and let, and, and fill them in and ask for their assistance. Um, I would say between now and the, and that Thursday, uh, vote, I don't know whether they call them, email them, talk to their staff or whatever, but I think that is something that they need to understand how pressing this issue is.
Uh, yes, sir, um, and, and we did make, I did make some contact with the Senator Nelson's office this past week in Tallahassee. I'll reach out to them first.
Great.
Because they're, he's representative, represents the entire area. And then we'll kind of work down the, the, uh, the line from there.
Great, I, I think that would really be good. Now, if there's ever a time when they can do something good, this is, this is...
I, I would share that the, um, the appropriations includes Mount Door and Alfa Masara. Alfa Masara, you all recall, had a lot of flooding in the San Sebastian Prado area, and both of those are in the same package. So, uh, you know, we, we, you know, as I've often said when I did legislative work in the past, um, asking for funding in numbers is usually better than asking for funding by yourself.
Right.
So, from that standpoint, you know, we're quite as good as we would be if we were by ourselves.
Right, because it's not an either, either or, it's the whole package.
Yeah.
We'll also reach out to their lobbyists because the state has, um, from their budget process, they have now moved some items off of listing, off the board, so to speak, out of the budget because they're trying to pay for more money or pay more cities and counties additional funding for their Irma, um, effect. So, um, this project was not originally submitted as that because it was part of the FEMA and so forth, but we'll reach out to them to see if there's any way we can get back on that listing and consideration.
Thank you very much.
And I would add, Mayor, I think that I know it will be billed that way, but this is an exigent, urgent issue for the reasons that our, uh, director has mentioned. And it's likely we can express what I understand to be the consensus of this council, that it is an exigent, urgent, uh, emergency. It's redundant, but I'm trying to find another word in here. And, uh, let them know how much we are in need of their support and assistance. And, uh, that's the best.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for all the good comments and everything everybody's been doing for this project. It's, uh, I know it's disturbing and, uh, but it's unfortunately, and, and we have to deal the same way in, in government newslow and it's unfortunate situation. We found that out when we were up there in Tallahassee and, uh, you just, things just don't move quickly. We try to move as long as we, as fast as we can. I like the idea of the, you know, maybe having a, a resolution prepared, uh, if we can and, and just, just get this thing moving. Whatever we can do and either hand deliver, I'll, you know, I'd be happy to hand deliver if we have to, so, but, um, whatever we can do. And we just go to discussion on resolution number twenty eighteen dash oh five, short-term vacation rentals. And, uh, we, we...
So, you have the red line resolution that was discussed last meeting and you have the final discussion or the final resolution, um, up to you to, uh, see if we made and, and carried all the correct, uh, red lines as you requested, that we send that out to you, um, and then see if you have any other red lines.
I'll move when you're ready, Karen.
Okay, uh, let's, just do a motion and, um, go ahead.
I move the approval of the resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero five. And just with a recommendation of it in the title, uh, to shorten that, um, after the word rentals in the two, four, six, eighth line, uh, and through the word intent and about the twelfth line, uh, that can probably be eliminated, but I don't care. It's a matter of shortening the title. Um, and for the, I'm more of that dark purpose, I think we ought to leave it as it is and pass it, uh, just as is with eliminating the red lines from the text. With, you've got the final copy there, so I move approval, pardon for the babbling, but two thousand eighteen dash zero five.
I'll second that.
Before you vote that in, I thought with typo that you might want to point out...
Of course.
In the third, whereas Florida is spelled without an A, F, L, or I D, and you need to correct that.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, would you please read the amended title, please?
Draft resol- sorry, draft, uh, resolution number twenty eighteen, a resolution of City Council of the City of Mount Door for awarding home rule powers and requesting that the Florida Legislature amend Florida statute section, that should say section five oh nine oh three two seventy to authorize local governments to regulate vacation rounds, requesting that the Florida Legislature vote against any bills that would diminish home rule power of local governments, requesting that the Florida Legislature vote in favor of bills that would restore home rule power to local governments, providing for legislative binding intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative action, providing for the mayor to execute this resolution, providing for directions to the city court, providing for shivering air from the state.
Okay, I move it. Yes, I move, and we had a second already on that.
A second.
Any other discussion from the council on this?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I do have one question. Uh, paragraph one, two, three, four, five. I voiced my concern about this. This is there are two hundred short-term rentals in the City of Mount Door and bottom line, only twenty-five are licensed.
What page?
Uh, page eighty-four of our packet. Paragraph pod. How my question is this, do we know there are two hundred short-term rentals? And B, it says twenty, approximately twenty-five are currently licensed. When you research it, that's, you can have, I can get a license that covers five or six rooms, seven, you know, or two or three properties, you know? So, do we know that how many are covered by these licenses?
Um, I would suggest that maybe we do consider removing that only because I've looked at it for four days and I do get num- different numbers. Um, you're gonna get what's out there, the number of red, of, uh, applied for the bills to change.
I just want it to be factual.
Yes, so maybe it's not necessarily relevant, but we could also maybe change the, change it to say we have noticed, or if you wish to leave it in there, that we've noted at some point in time, there's as many as with, with so many licenses.
But both statements says approximately, so it doesn't...
They do.
...be a specific. And personally, I thought it was overwhelming to hear the numbers for us. I thought that was impacting.
Yeah, but if they're not accurate.
But it says approximately, so it doesn't... If it said specific, then that'd be different to me, but it said...
Approximately two hundred, but we have, per the city, we have four different numbers. Are they, do they, how far, do they vary?
They just changed one or two.
One or two.
Okay, they only changed one or two, I have no problem with that.
There you go.
One day, stuck, one day, dead next.
Mayor, I, I believe that that should remain in there as a, not, just as a general statement because, um, we'll hear this later, but when the delegation from this council was in Tallahassee last week, that was a significant impact to the legislators that were listening. Uh, you could read their body language that there were basically ninety percent of those that are registered or advertised nationally are not registered with the state as required by law. And that's a significant impact to them, at least I saw that. So, I think we should leave it in there as long as it's vague enough to be accurate. Lawyer speak.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, is there any comments from the public on this issue? Do you state your name and address?
Chrissy Stow, twenty sixteen, Donlin Place. Um, I think it was about a month ago, I was watching this meeting on Facebook because I couldn't come, but, um, the Ernsts got up and first initially spoke about this. And when I heard Terry say that she was registered with the state, I contacted her the next day to say, what are you talking about? You're registered with the state. I have a VR, uh, sorry, uh, short-term vacation rental, um, in the City of Mount Door. And I didn't know you had to register with the state. I've had it for two years and you, you don't, I, nobody told me I'm registered to pay tax and, of course, report the income and all that, but nobody told me I had to be registered with the state. So, now I'm twenty-six, I guess, because I'm registered with the state. But, so maybe part of the thing is to, people don't know. So, I guess in getting the word out to get these people to tell you that they have a short-term rental, you should, or the state should let them know you're also supposed to register as a vacation rental. Just a...
Anybody, anybody else from the Public Works or Address Society? Seeing none, any other comments from the council? Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Ms. Tillot.
Yes.
Ms. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Bancy.
Yes.
Mr. Krail.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
And despite that paragraph, I will vote yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Mayor, with your permission, would you sign this?
Excuse me, would you sign this? We'd like to send it on up to our lobbyist since they're still, still there so that he can hand carry it to each of the representatives and the senators that represent this district.
Soon it'll be signed.
Soon it'll be signed.
It's signed tomorrow morning. I'll have to sign it tonight if it's ready, but I'll do it tomorrow morning because it's more typing.
So, district verification, I'm sorry. When I read it, I read this draft, it's twenty eighteen oh five and it's gonna be the actual resolution pass, not a draft.
Yes.
And parking implementation plans, some discussion, all that. And, um, so, Ms. Hayes, to the office.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we put this information in here, um, to give you a history again, um, we've had several discussions, as you know, going back many years, two thousand fifteen, most recent, um, in reference to, um, the Renaissance group actually being involved in the process, um, providing recommendations to our advisory boards, our advisory boards having numerous meetings, um, and providing feedback to, to the council in reference to opportunities and options in which to address our downtown parking issues. Um, in the report, um, there were several suggestions, as part of the suggestions, um, staff looked at, the advisory board, excuse me, actually looked at several of the options with staff, um, and then came in and presented those options to, to you. Um, we understand that these programs that we may be implementing in the near future will be pilot programs. At any point in time, we understand that you as the council, um, may come back and say that we need to relook at these programs, they're not working or they may be working and, or to, let's change something. We also understand that from a pilot perspective, um, the, for our time limits, actually worked with the valet parking, um, which we already, actually have the RFP going out there also for that piece of it, um, as well as, um, the shuttle parking, which we've been talking about now, we've had success for the last year. So, um, there, there's a, a combination of all of these processes to, to help our downtown parking. Um, one of the other items we talked about early on was actually encouraging residents, excuse me, visitors and tourists to park at the Highland Street, um, parking areas that we have up on Highland, um, and to be able to use some bicycles and so forth that we're bringing in to, to, um, encourage those who wish to actually get on, on the bikes and ride to the downtown can also have that opportunity if the shuttles aren't running. So, we're looking at several different options, um, the other... The other opportunity we have is to look at our signage, in which we actually have been doing that and we'll be bringing back to you some signage. So there's a, a host of different items that will be considered as part of this process. We have stated that we would like to at least look in sometime in March. I believe Mr. Peters, Peters mentioned that possibly it may, or Mr. Sanders, Sanders fell, mentioned it may even be difficult to get signage in March because of our vendor that we use, most of the state of Florida as well as other areas are trying to, to put up new signs after Arma came through, so we're not even sure that we can meet that signage time limit of, of March, but in the near future, between after the season, the typical season that we run through, end of March timeframe beyond, that we would put the signage up and begin the process at that point in time. We would still encourage to, we're encouraged to implement the program because we do understand it's like the shuttles, we learn from them. We will become better at the process. The time limit, parking, if we're looking at the time limit, is within a very specific corridor. It's not the entire downtown. All of our parking lots are still open and, and free to park. There's some corridor, corridor downtown parking lot areas that will be limited. It's very time restricted. It doesn't start till eleven. If you come downtown to have breakfast at eight or nine o'clock, your time still, that's four hours does not even start till eleven o'clock. So you can spend, you know, most of the day here shopping and enjoying the downtown without even having to even think about it, some four-hour time limit. There is a twenty-five dollar assessed fee if you are fined for parking more than the four hours. In speaking with different folks up in the Tallahassee, several of them felt like the twenty-five dollars they have that in, in their area was a very reasonable fee. They actually told me that there are some areas that are ten dollars and, and that didn't deter them from not, not considering it. They just let the, the ten dollar fee be assessed and they parked where they liked if that had to be, had to be the case. So I, I think the ten dollar fee or something less than that could create a problem for us and, 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 you know, we'd have to look at that at that point in time. But again, it's a, a program that we, we brought to you from different angles through the advisory boards and we have worked with the, opened it for the residents and the merchants in the downtown to come out and speak about this. We had our first meeting back in November and then we had another meet, meeting in January. There were a lot of concerns and comments from the merchants. To be fair to them, they, they were very concerned about their business, about how they felt like the four hours would impede them. So, you know, I, I just opened it at that point in time. I know one of our council members, vice mayor, was there, so she can probably speak a lot more about that than I can because I was there the first part of the meeting and then I was gone, but we just wanted to bring it back to you and, and let it be an item for discussion.
Just real quick, for your comment, just, uh, just an email that I received, there was just one item that was pointed out in, in the email that kind of was interesting was the fact that when we get people coming downtown and they park their car and they're enjoying downtown and then part of their enjoyment, they go by Lakeside Inn or they go somewhere else, they go down the Fourth Street, talks, oh, I wanna go take this tour. Instead, they're going for a while on this tour while their car is racking up time. And is there any way that we could look to address that kind of an issue? Or, you know, how we, you know, with, with those merchants who offer those services, to ask the people where you park, things like that, so if we can avoid those kind of things. But, Ms. Hoaks, did you wanna comment?
I, I did go to the meeting and my full intentions was sit there and listen, however, I did end up opening my mouth later in the meeting. Because I have obviously lived this whole parking thing for the ten years I was at the chamber. And it was a bit of deja vu because several of the things brought up as suggestions had been tried in the past and hadn't worked. So, and, and then I opted that, yes, we could send out letters again and things, but, you know, there are just challenges, excuse me, challenges with parking. I've, I've spent some time since that meeting talking to some individuals, reading again some more of the information. But I guess where I've come to at this point, and I respect everything I've heard and I, and I listened to it, but we have been talking about parking for so long, we need to do something. What I did hear this, Ms. Hayes say and what I feel as I've listened at that meeting strongly about is to review the implementation of this within ninety to a hundred and hundred and eighty days and bring it back here with some very defined information. We did, while we were in Tallahassee, I too was there with the group and, and different places as we walked around, they have four-hour parking limitations there too. And our parking issues are nothing compared to Tallahassee when session is in. But with that said, you know, we've just gotta start somewhere and I think we originally listened to three hours, we moved it to four hours. I think we need to see what happens with it. As that, as I say that though, my one concern though is if we can't get our signs by March, I don't wanna see our six months go into the fall season and not have some determination. And if I counted on my fingers correctly, as I was listening to you talk, if we don't get it started by April, then September is the end of the six months. And I would like us to at least have, with the pleasure of the council, discussion in August or September, where it's at. You know, a month or two isn't gonna give you a lot of data, plus, you know, we're seasonal, so we're never gonna get around, okay, well, if you do it then, it's really not gonna do a through, true picture. It's not gonna do a true picture if you do the reverse either. I mean, that's just the reality of it because we are busier up through March, April, things do change until again September. That's the reality of what I think we've seen here for years. You know, so it isn't gonna be, but, but at least will give us a feel of seeing it. At least that's my thoughts in it. And then listening to it all and rereading the documents and rereading, I, thank you, Mr. Bernard, he sent a whole email to all of us and we saw and it had all pieces in it also.
Mr. Rawson, Ms. Tillot.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let me be a little more blunt. You said ten years, Council.
That I was at, that's ten years, much longer than that.
Of course, and I've been here fifteen years. And the first month I was here, I heard complaints from city residents, I heard complaints from merchants about parking. And that has been a continuing daily, monthly, yearly issue. And as the saying goes, this can has been kicked down the road for at least fifteen years, in my, in my opinion. We paid for thousands of dollars for a study. We have had experts that have looked at this and given us their expert recommendations in a variety of areas. What the sign should look like, how long it should be. They recommended three-hour parking and on and on and on. And the, so, and then we had the merchants meeting. At virtually every meeting, with few exceptions, once this has been discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, at the council and at other merchant meetings, there've been a few comments, but it's kind of been laissez-faire and, but now when the rubber gets the road, as the saying goes again, all of a sudden, there's some excitement and, oh, we can't have four hours. I agree with Ms. Hayes. We have to give it a try and I'm tired of kicking the can down the road. We need to have some finality to this, in my view. The likely dozens of meetings we've had have just done that, just prolonged the inevitable. And either we spend money on, on, on studies like we have, multiple studies, and we give that a try, or we're throwing money away for nothing. If we do some more studies or if we say, well, we'll modify this. I'm not sure I'm any smarter than the experts that we hired to decide it should be three-hour parking. I'm not sure I'm that smart. I tend to want to trust some of the expertise we pay for, at least initially. So I believe, as I heard you say, Ms. Hoaks, that we should give this a try. We've already approved it, it's in my understanding. This has already been approved, so we're just discussing it. I'll give you one example of a merchant that was, is so tired, the downtown main, main drag merchant, that is so tired of having the merchant opposite them park their car in front of that merchant's store and leave it there for ten, twelve hours or whatever the time is. Parking in front of her store. It makes no sense to me to allow that to go on without doing something and giving it a try. And so I agree with Ms. Hayes that we should try it. Over the period of time that's been suggested, that sounds reasonable to me. I think twenty-five dollars is very fair. Try parking in any other city, major city where there's parking. See if you get by with twenty-five, uh, twenty-five dollars. We were in Tallahassee and they have parking meters all over the place. And if you're a legislator or if you're a lobbyist or if you're a citizen that wants to testify, you're gonna pay a dollar, a dollar, no, a quarter, a penny a minute, penny a minute. So for four hours, we put in four dollars worth of quarters to stay there and there are thousands of parking meters there. So those cities that have gone through this have decided that, that, that has to stop and we have to have some finality and they're used to that now. Everybody's used to that up there, I can tell, so.
And the thing is, just because it goes with what you're saying.
Sure.
And you, you could only put in for four hours.
Yeah, maximum.
So you still had to come back.
That's right.
Even though it was.
Good point, I should've mentioned.
Yeah, that's, that's what caught my attention. So you fed it for four hours, but if you knew you were gonna be there five or six, you still had to come back and feed it some more. That's the way they do it.
So, that, thank you, Mayor and Council for that long diatribe, but I, I do believe, I, I for one have had enough and I think we should move on. Let the manager do what she's charged with doing and that's managing this issue after years of studying. Thank you.
I agree with both Ms. Hoaks and Mr. Rawson. I fully understand that we, any, any scheme that you do is not going to please everybody all of the time. But I think this serves to help the majority and, and, and get this off of, you know, dead center and, and implemented. I would urge that we continue to provide information to the merchants and to visitors and to residents that we are not going to be imposing the parking time restrictions until we have an active either valet service or shuttle service that will be, and, and the signs are up, so that everything has to be in place, I think. I, I don't think it would serve us to just put in the parking restriction without having the ability to, to serve the needs of those who perhaps need to run back to their cars quickly to go get fresh groceries when they run out at a restaurant or to, you know, have to go to the bank to get this, change money or take money in or whatever they need to do. So I just think that, that if we can, and I believe that that's the intent, that we're not just gonna, just say, okay, we're gonna do this and then maybe a month later, we'll have the valet service or maybe another month later, we'll have the shuttle service. But we need to start getting the word out now that all of these things are gonna happen in a coordinated manner and that, oh, by the way, if you were coming into town, we have free, park as long as you like at places like the Methodist Church. There's the public parking lot up at the corner of Liberty and Highland. We have other, there's that huge big lot in between Baker and, and Tremaine, you know, the lot that feeds off of the parking garage, we have the garage. Just keep getting the word out ahead of time and then when we have a date, we can refine dates as we, as we get closer to an actual implementation day. But a lot of the concerns that I have heard, especially from merchants, is that we're not going to be providing them with any other alternative. And, and I go back and explain, no, there will be alternatives to you park, parking in front of your business all day. So that's my comment.
Anyway, it's a, this is a great, I guess a great problem to have for city to have parking problems because we know people love us and they wanna come here and enjoy the city, so. But with that comes our responsibility and, and then I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Rawson and, you know, as long as I've been associated, you know, coming to city council meetings and everything since around two thousand and twelve, it's been always the main issue and again, so as far as I know, it's been, you know, five years or longer that we've been kicking the can, right? So, and so I was hoping this would be the year that we do something and we make a start and do what we need to do. When I was in St. Augustine's and I got dropped off at a, at a corner with one of their little shuttle things that they have. And I'm walking down the street and I noticed down halfway down the street, there was a blue, like a little blue kiosk, just a little short thing, it looked like an oversized parking meter. But it had no parking meters along the street and then I'm looking and evidently it was something that you can either insert cards or something in there and you're paying for the parking and there's probably time limits on there. I'm looking on the street, you know, there was not, not a car in this one spot. I'm looking over, is there sensors or something here? What are they doing? There's no marks on there like a number, so evidently they're probably inputting their license number, I would have to assume so. I tried calling the mayor and I've been unsuccessful. We keep doing phone tag for quite some time now, so if, maybe we can talk with the mayor, find out exactly what they're doing. And Mr. Tucker, you do?
I can tell you exactly what they're doing because I used to have property in St. Augustine's. That is a little kiosk. You simply put your credit card in or cash, it spits out for how much time you want, it spits out a receipt, you put the receipt on your dashboard. When the officer comes by, he looks at your dash, if he doesn't see it, you get a ticket. Or if he looks at it and says you had two hours, it started, it prints out the time, it says ten oh two, and you got two hours, but now it's one thirty-five, you get a ticket. But if it's eleven fifteen, he just, he or she just walks on, but that's what it is.
I was wondering if that might be what they're doing, but nah, can't be because some of those blocks were really long. Our blocks are short. Their blocks were long, so I figured, well, if you're parking in the middle, I can't see too many people are gonna go and walk all the way down there to go that, then walk all the way back to their car.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, what they do, so.
Yeah, they.
One of those things you use, so that's, like I said, you learn, you live and learn and do it, but yeah, this is something, we have short blocks here, so, you know, maybe if that's the system, I don't know what they cost, but that might be, you know, might be a big help and for everybody. And I, I guess you can go back and renew if you need to, or you get to, you put whatever time in you feel like.
Yeah, and you can go back. You put three hours in, but.
You put six hours in, you put eight hours in, or is it just a limit of four hours? Would you, like, say if we limit four hours, would it only be a four-hour limit with one renewal or something like that?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any limitation. I know you have to, there's a limitation how much you can get at one time. But I don't believe there's a limitation on going back, you know, after your time is up, getting another one for the max.
I know that would have to be commensurate with our fines and everything else, so it'd have to be all worked in, so, you know, it's not, you, yeah.
What was the question in the rates? One fifty per hour, it says.
So, Mr. Crayle?
That's a, what Mr. Tucker described is very common in Europe and other places and it would work very well in our city lots. Where you have twenty or thirty parking places, one kiosk, you're only having to walk, you know, within the parking lot to get here. If you're willing to pay the two bucks an hour or whatever it is, stay all day. If not, um, park on the street and leave in four hours. Premium stuff you pay for and, and those are the best parking spaces and.
Any other, any other comments? I know we can't go meters, okay, individual meters, because the way you park the cars there, we don't have enough sidewalk to put meters in. You're gonna be knocking over meters every time a car comes in the back end. You're gonna be hitting the meter when you do that, so a meter's hard. That'd be something like a kiosk system if we ever went that way, but it's a thought that we can work on, look at as we go down through the system. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, a very quick, because I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I will tell you that I intend to talk, since that is part of my district. I do intend to talk every merchant, uh, at approximately a ninety-day period, once we start, to see how they're doing. And if I see any trends down within their businesses, I will bring it up before council and voice their concerns. Because I know they are concerned, but I agree with everything that's been said, that the can kicking has got to stop and we've got to do something. This is a start and, but if it's not working and the merchants are suffering, I will bring it to this council's attention rapidly.
I'm just wondering, you go to a leadership meeting tomorrow morning, correct?
Yes, sir.
Probably Mike, Mike will with you tomorrow morning and, you know, I might maybe get that, get the, and quantify the leadership group there and get some feedback from them or give us some in the future on it also.
And I would just say in reference to your comment earlier, Mayor, we put the police officer in the downtown, the CRA. So I think, you know, those are, those are issues we may have to deal with if somebody goes out on a, on a cruise or, and didn't plan on it. But that's the reason we have a downtown CRA officer who is actually either issuing it or can, can decide and make that, you know, decision to, to reme- decide and make that, you know, decision to remove it, yes, because she has a ticket that says they went and bought a cruise. The point is not to deter people from being part of the downtown, it's just to make sure that we don't have people sitting there for eight and 12 hours that are not shopping and not, you know, being part of the downtown, so, from that perspective, so. And I will agree with Councilmember Tillitt, we definitely have to make sure the programs all mix at one time, and the signage needs to be in place, and we do intend to have the signage in place before, obviously with the four hours, and at least the shuttle system in place at that time. The valet could be a little delayed, but the shuttle system would be there in place, so all of the residents, as well as all the merchants and all their employees, can get a ride and park their car and come down, and there's an easy, you know, transferring, if we have to bring extra shuttles in for a period of time, to make sure that works, that's what we'll have to do as a city. So we want to see success, not only for the merchants, but for those others visiting our city, shopping and enjoying their day.
Any other discussion? Okay, Rowan, you basically have something, so you have more information to work with, and move forward.
And the next meeting for the merchants will be in April, so whether that's the beginning of the program, or at, we already start at that point in time, but we'll set up a meeting for April sometime.
Thank you. And charter review, we're having a discussion on that tonight, and Ms. Aide?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we provided you the same similar memo as provided earlier when we talked about the charter review at your request. We have listed three potential items you could consider, and consulted with the city attorney, and I would let her give comment in reference to specifying the committee to look at as selective scope as possible, and we provided you that information in the sense of the canvassing board to talk about the election process, et cetera, Florida State Chapter 166, just in the home rule, and/or the Wolf Branch Innovation District, and look at the redistricting, or the revision of districts. So we provided that information to you, and I'm sure that she can give you any answers to any questions you might have in reference to the scope or what the limitations would be.
Do you want to do some comments anytime?
Sure. It's real brief. Because of the way the, the way the charter's set out, it is your discretion to have them meet or not, therefore you can define the scope of what they're looking at. The reason for that really is that they're at your bidding, the existing charter committee, they have their own option to do a referendum, so if they want to go outside, you know, the scope that council wants, voters have their own option under statute to vote their own way. That, that's really the reason. I looked around at some other cities, and I found where other cities have done that, and limited the scope of certain items that they wanted during charter review committee for the next session.
Okay. Go ahead. I'd like to, I intend, we wish to make a motion regarding this for us to consider, so we have something to chew on. So, I move that this council implement a seven-member charter review ad hoc committee to consider the three issues mentioned on page 100 of our agenda, with committee appointments to be made at the first council meeting in March of 2018, and that the ad hoc committee report its recommendations to the council by the first meeting in June of 2018. And that's my motion, and if I can get a second, I'll give you some comments.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rawson. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The dates that are mentioned in there are one week before the requirement that has to be done, and, or not one week, one council meeting before that, and one council meeting before the end, when there has to be a report, so that gives a cushion of one council meeting if for some reason the ad hoc committee, if it passes, needs an additional couple of weeks to do its business. And the manager's report, page 99, as we mentioned last time, makes it clear that we've had a review in 2006, 2007, 2009, 2011, and 2015, and as we know, there's a requirement to do it every five years, to consider it every five years, at least one time. So we have a history and a pattern of doing it on an average of every two years, it's pushing three years now, since the last one. And the only expense related, and not that that's unimportant, but the only expense related to this is essentially a legal cost, to have our legal counsel present, which is certainly a necessary thing to do. I see no harm in considering things that should be looked at and presented to the people, that is, the citizens of Mount Dora. Since it's their charter, as in their constitution, they ought to have the privilege of considering yes or no at an election, whether or not there should be some changes made, to keep that close to our chest and not giving them that every five years, if we think there's something that should be done every two years or three years, we ought to give them that chance, they can vote yes or no. So, it's as democratic as you can, as I can imagine, is to allow them that privilege. And so I'm not one who believes we should deny them that privilege even every year. If it's, if it's brought to our attention, which it has been in these areas, we ought not to say, no, we know better than they, we're not going to let them do it, we're not going to let them vote on those issues. We ought to take it to a council, or to a ad hoc committee, have them analyze it, take citizen input, come up with a recommendation, which may be nothing, or maybe one of the three, or two or three of the, or as our councilor said, an independent resolution. So I never seen any, never felt any harm to give options to the people in that position. That's why, that's my support of the motion, and that's my reason for the motion. Thank you.
How many, I just, I just think reviewing, or considering revision of districts at this point is sort of an exercise in futility, or maybe a wasted exercise, because we haven't annexed anything. So before I go any further, how many people do we anticipate being annexed between now and, say, 2020? And are we just talking the Wolf Branch area? I mean, are we just talking...
The Wolf Branch area is the only area I've looked at only based on conversation now, that has nothing...
Okay, and what's the scope of the number of people who would indeed be underrepresented if they were represented only by two at-large, I mean, I don't know how many people we're talking about.
I'd have to look at those numbers, it's 1,300 acres out there plus, so there's a lot of acreage from Wolf Branch Road, Round Lake Road, out to the end of that district, according to how much is annexed in. Planning has to usually look at those numbers, do you have those numbers, Mr. Sandersfeld?
I'm just wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse here, as far as, you know...
Let us have one more discussion, then we may, I don't know, probably work into your...
Redistricting, you know...
Mr. Crail, and then, then, I'm going to, excuse me, I'm going to answer a question real quick, and then, Mr. Crail.
Thank you, Ben Sandersfeld. Most of that land's going to be vacant initially, so the development subdivisions will be tracking behind. There are some structures out there, but it's not meaningful for a discussion like this.
Right. And most of it is going to be business, business education, I mean, yes, there will be some housing, but I, it's, we have been talking about this as sort of a long-term thing, so I don't see any, you know, urgent plans for housing coming across.
Mr. Crail?
I intend to vote no on Mr. Rawson's resolution as it stands. I think there is a reason to consider bullet point number one, the canvassing board creation or in general. I'd like to understand better bullet point number two, revision of language on municipal home rule powers, because that is a topic that's of utmost importance in the state. I'm not sure what we'd be trying to do about that, and I understand exactly what Ms. Tillitt was saying, I could not support this because of bullet point number three, revising districts where nobody lives. If people are going to live there, and when they move in, then we'll, then we'll do it. But right now, it's 1,300 acres of empty land, and I think it would be way premature to do that now. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to respectfully disagree with you, but it has to do not with the Innovation District. I'm going to speak to the fact that the charter was put in place in 1991 with seven representatives on this council, two of which are at-large. The population of Mount Dora at that time was 8,000?
5,000.
Okay, so those two at-large representatives were covering a smaller number of people. Right now, we sit at just under, or just over, 14,000. So we have grown that much, and yet we have two individuals besides the mayor trying to represent and be fair to those 14,000. My point of it is that look at the redistricting for representatives, and perhaps change the districts, and look at whether or not we should have at-large, and try to represent the groups of people so they truly have a representative, and that it's a size in which we can represent them. It's very hard to represent 14,000 people and really know all those things, so I'm not looking at it from innovation. That is an addition that's coming along, and that at some point, we need to do it, and if we're going to look at redistricting, then look at including that and redefining it, so that if we have six districts, and we're representing a different number of people, as the city grows, it isn't going to take too long to where those districts and certain ones more than others are going to be back to where we're at now of doing it in 25 years. So that's where I'm coming from, it's not the innovation part, and it's for discussion. I'm not saying that's where, what I would support, because I sit in that role, and have sat in it as a mayor, and now as an at-large representative. That's a large number of people that you're trying to understand, and it's the diversity of our community. That's, so that's where I see it, I'm not looking just as defining it by innovation, I want the whole picture to be looked at. And I think now is the time to begin that discussion, whether the third point with whatever group, if we choose to move forward, looks and is ready to it, at least the discussion starts now, and we have a record of that discussion, and maybe then we have to have a charter review next year if that part of it doesn't get done. I do think the first two definitely, and yes, we need more definition for number two, but the whole canvassing board was a total change for us this year, and I really would like to see definition and exactly who sits on that canvassing board, because I have some personal feelings about that also, which...
And I agree with that, but two years ago, we did consider redistricting, and it was soundly defeated, so it's not like this goes back to 1991. This was considered, the people spoke, and we just got to bring it back...
I think we did a more job of educating, Mr. White, needed to have done.
Year after year after year, until...
It does, it does, until it becomes fair to all, I believe.
Well, and one other...
As I said at the beginning, we will respectfully disagree.
And I will respectfully disagree too, because we get emails, each of us, whether we are district council members or at-large council members, on topics that we have discussed tonight and other topics, and I don't think that our at-large council members get any more phone calls or emails on topics, we all represent, we're not just trying to be...
Maybe we shouldn't have any districts, and we all represent everybody. Otherwise, why do we have districts then?
Good thought.
I'm just...
No, real quick, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you also, Mr. Crail, on some of your points, because the main thing we're looking at here is, we're taking on a role of the charter review committee. Now, if you want to appoint the councils for a charter review committee, that's one thing, I feel that the public should be on the charter review committee. So if you're telling, telling them, we don't need a charter review committee, we just make all the decisions ourselves, we'll do our own referendums, things like that...
I don't think I said that at all, sir.
Well, you're kind of ignoring that to me, so anyway, so I, because I respectfully disagree with what you said. So, but the thing is, when we look at item number three, it says make consider. Okay, we don't need to have, they can come up with a formula, they can come up with a plan, it doesn't have to be an exact district, it can come up, whatever they want to come up with. I'm not limiting a charter review committee to what, you know, hey, you're going to come up with so many districts, good idea from Ms. Hoakes, just then, you know, make it all at-large. Let them, let them come up to us, now, we have the final decision as a council for looking at a referendum, okay, if these have to go on a referendum, and they come to us with something here, an item, and put it to a referendum, we have a voice at that point as a council to say yes or no to advance it to a referendum, okay? We can, we can vote it down, or advance it for a referendum. But to tell them now, I don't like it because you're going to be doing this, we're not directing them, they're saying, come up with a thing here, as far as the language, you don't like the language, that's fine. That's, this is just what they're going to be talking about, I'm not directing that this charter review committee, what they're going to sit here and talk about, because if we are, then we don't need them, okay, at that point. We do let them do the work they have, I think they meet roughly on a maybe once-a-week basis, I think that's what they met last time, was once a week, meet on a once-a-week basis, and you do it. The only thing I mentioned before that I would like to see, when we, if we, if we set up the committee and name the members, is not to use prior council people and/or mayors at that point. Let the people, because, and not that they can't do a good job, and believe me, they can, but it becomes an intimidation factor, okay, at that point, where you have people that they feel, oh, well, that was the mayor, he used to be the mayor, she used to be the mayor, so we better listen to them, and I want to listen to the people, I want, I want to be able to listen to the people in this thing. So with that, kind of...
Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Massey. I would like to make a comment. My comment is this, and I've commented about this my last time we met, if there were a grounds well among the public to make changes to our charter, I'd feel differently. My experience was walking the city and talking to hundreds of people, only one person raised the issue of charter, only one voter. Someone earlier used the word premature, I'm not opposed to charter review committee for the future, I just think it's premature. The only thing that has any substance, I beg your pardon, among the three things that we delineate here, is the, is the canvassing board issue, and we could do that by ordinance and solve that problem today. My concern is that we only get a very limited return as to that particular area for $5,000 expenditure, which was the estimate for the attorney fees, I believe, from the first time we discussed this. For that reason, I just think it's, it's too early to do that, too early to do the charter review process. I think it's coming in the future. We're not to the point where we've done the annexation, there's adequate coverage at this point among the at-large representatives, in my view, and that's the way up to you.
I'd be happy to defer to Mr. Crail and follow him.
I'll defer, Mr. Rawson, you know, I'll come back and discuss it.
The interesting thing to me is, Mayor and Council, is that all of these issues that we discussed here tonight, all the details, to the extent they are details, that we discussed here tonight, we've kept just to ourself, these seven people sitting at the dials. We haven't given any of the 14,000 citizens a chance to weigh in on this, and essentially, we would deny them the opportunity to even say no. We don't want that, or to recommend to us, no, we don't want that, or yes, we do. So I think we are becoming, in my view, and this is intended to be as kind as I can, we shouldn't, in my view, be autocratic here, let's let the citizens decide whether they want to redistricting or not, whether they want to do these other items that are in the bullet points or not, instead of keep our cards close to our chest and deny them the opportunity to even discuss it. We're discussing it freely among ourselves, and that's, that's great, why don't we allow the public to discuss it? And the only issue for those that are really concerned about the money aspect is the $5,000, and we're all concerned about that, but the opportunity to discuss the city's constitution, the public's constitution, I think I'd rather opt on the side of giving them that opportunity than saying, no, you can't. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Crail? Yes, I would, again, respectfully disagree with your last comments, Mr. Rawson. Any vote I do, one, I try to research it prior to coming here, and that research includes talking to the people in my district. So when I vote, I'm voting in large part on what they want, not necessarily what I want, okay? I'm voting what they want. And again, I have to agree... And again, I have to agree with the gentleman next to me, Mr. Massey. And I just think it's a little premature. If there's a groundswell for it, I can consider it next month during our next meeting, or two months down the road, I'll be, I'll support it. But I don't see a groundswell for it. And it's premature because we're going to have to do this, a total redistricting, redistricting, in my view, come a year or two from now. 'Cause, you know, certain districts are growing by leaps and bounds. Not my district per se, and not District One per se.
No, mine is growing.
No, it's-
Well, they won't.
It's, you know, not, yeah. Well, I know two is, and I know four is.
Those mine are.
Yeah, yours and mine are.
Two's growing, right.
And again, you know, the at-large voters all have at least one district council individually they can talk to. Also, and with the at-large, so. And I thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Who's discussing more than him? Yeah. The gentleman with the comments.
Well, I'm just reading that if we have twenty-five citizens who wanna come forth and petition us, they could do that. So perhaps that's the way we need, 'cause I disagree with both of you. I have heard a number of people question it, and the reason, I believe, it failed last time is we did a lousy job of educating people, a lousy job. Okay, we had the meetings and the group discuss it, but people did not understand it. And on them, and there were so many things on the ballot, they didn't understand it. And it was very easy just to do the top one, which then defeated it because of the way it was worded. So I think it comes back to us, that if we have things that go on the ballot for our citizens, we have a responsibility to educate them as to what it's all about. Because they don't, a lot of them don't understand the process. They just don't, they don't feel like they, or they don't understand the decisions that's done because they don't know they have a process the way that, where they could have questioned it.
I'd like to, I guess we need to have a vote on this motion, because I'd like to make another motion after the vote on this.
I would, I was going to request that the, because I can see we're just setting tonight, and I don't want to just to shut off something with the vote. I'd like to put this on the table, if I can, maybe have a motion for it, to put this, table this for a future date, and to see if there's anything else, if there's, if we wanna bring this back in to discuss it. And another point here, because time will be a blessing. And then, if we table this, then you can still be free to make another motion if you like. Am I correct, I believe, yes?
I have no problem, as the mover, move on, in requesting that it be tabled, or in suggesting, and following your suggestion, it be tabled. Until a few, until a date that, subject to what council tells us, at a soon date, not nothing in September or October, I think we should resolve this more quickly.
We can, I think, the table would be till maybe to the next meeting.
Sure, I mean, if there's time to do that, sure.
Make a motion to add effect, I'll accept a motion to add effect.
So you made a motion, but there was, was there a second?
Yes.
There was a second. Okay, so then you would need to withdraw that.
I'm just asking for a table of that motion.
Table, you want a table of notes?
Sure.
Table the motion.
You can do that.
Right.
If, right now, there's a motion to table, and is there a second to that?
We need a, I thought you just could table, I'm sorry.
I think you need a second for a table. If you wanna correct me on that, I can repeat that.
Council has to agree on the motion, I'm not sure I can make a motion.
May I ask a question while she's checking? What are we gonna have two weeks from now at our next meeting that we don't have tonight? I mean, I'm just asking for a rationale, Mr. Mayor.
No, just asking for a table. If you wanna give it, if you don't want, if it's on table, then we'll vote on it. It's up to this council to vote on the table, and what, do I find that, pardon me?
Table requires a second.
Okay.
But if you're continuing it to the, if you're just moving it to next meeting, you're just gonna continue. So maybe it's just-
Okay, so it'll be a motion to continue? Okay.
So be it.
Okay, be motion to continue, we have a motion?
I can second that.
Second, okay. And there's no discussion on table a motion, so, wanna vote on a table a motion. And you wanna call the ball, please, please, right now.
Continue to a specific date.
Yes, on the, continuing to the next meeting.
Two twenty, please. All right, Councilmember Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Hoaks?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
No, and I'm, I, that's, no, no, okay, no.
Mr. Tucker?
No.
Mr. Crail?
No.
Mr. Massey?
No.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
So let's take a, let's take a vote on the motion, so then.
Let's get the public to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have, we did make a motion, so yes, public can come forward and speak on the issue. Give you three minutes.
President of Auto, five forty-one East First Avenue. I couldn't agree with Ms. Hoaks more that the reason that this thing may have failed the last time is 'cause nobody had a clue, the way it was written, what we were voting on. And I bet you that if you told the public that, for example, if we were to redistrict to, let's say, seven districts instead of, what do we have now, five, four with mayor, and two at-large, I bet if you said to the public, if we continue the way we are now, that the possibility exists, and I'm not picking on Mr. Ralston's district, but I won't use him, 'cause he knows I like him anyway, so it's okay. That if you said, "The way we're set up now, you could have a mayor, a district, you could have a district representative, a city councilperson, and at-large position, and the mayor out of one district." That's a lot of weight in one district. You couldn't have that if you got rid of these at-large positions, and you district such that it's equal representation. And you're absolutely right, you don't have two at-large positions that are trying to represent everybody, instead of just the people that are in their district. The other situation, Mr. Massey mentioned that people didn't say that much to him when he was running for the at-large position. I would remind you that only about eleven percent of the population voted in this last election, which tells you that not very many people are engaged. I bet if you went out and did a street reporter review and asked, interviews, and asked people what they know about the charter, they'd say, "Diddly squat." So for us to assume that people know what's in this charter, and that they like it, and they don't wanna make any changes to it, in my opinion, it's because they don't have a clue what's in it. And if we going, and I see no reason at all, there is, there's a lot of opinion about this business that we've got with four districts, a mayor, two at-large, and also campaigning for these at-large positions. And if you're campaigning for one district, you only have to raise enough money to campaign in that one district. These at-large positions are trying to cover the entire city. It's not fair to the at-large positions to have to campaign for those. So there's a whole lot of reasons to change what we have right now. And I would at least give a committee an opportunity to come up with some recommendations for you all to look at, as opposed to saying, "Oh, no, we just like it the way it is," for whatever reason, and we're not willing to change it, we don't even wanna talk about it. I think that's ridiculous.
Jim Murray, twelve twenty-four Normandy Drive. I understand you're talking about one particular item right here, but that's not what this is all about. This looks at the whole Charter Review. This doesn't talk about just one specific item, and that's what you're focusing on. You need to go back to the original reason why we have a Charter Review. If you look in the Charter Review, you'll see a section in there that says, "Annually, we shall have an ad hoc committee." That ad hoc committee hasn't been there for ten years. That means that every time you've had a review, it's gone before these citizens, they've come up with it, and they've skipped over that one section. Well, that one section needs to be removed. So this is the way you do it, you do it through the Charter Review. So it's not just this one item you're arguing over. Look at the whole big picture, because that's what it's about. And limiting the citizens to talk, you table it for a week, I guarantee you, there'll be twenty-five here. Guaranteed.
Any else in the public wish to address? Mr. Massey. Try to be in my best behavior. You got three minutes to do it. Keep your hands up, but, grab a hold of your cup. Mike Masterson, seven eight eight seven Crossbones, line, Lexon, Mount Dora. Couple of things. One, Ms. Hoaks has spoken about the issues of representing fourteen thousand people. I'm unaware of any lack of candidates to run for the at-large positions. If the at-large positions are regarded as a burden, I think we have plenty of candidates coming up that doesn't, that represents that people are willing to stand up for the city, for everybody in the city. You cited development as an issue. If you're going, if you're talking about establishing a plan to redistrict, you don't know where you're going to try to redistrict, you're laying out a format before you have a problem to solve. So you're, it looks to me like you're creating a voter and district allocation plan now as a solution for a problem that doesn't exist and may not arise until after two nineteen. Twenty nineteen makes sense. Until we have population counts in the areas of potential development, we're potentially creating district lines. This may be a little sensitive, but in my opinion, the justifications offered in twenty fifteen to eliminate the at-large seats did not reflect someplace special vision of our city. We do not need it as another divisive election. Voters across the city overwhelmingly rejected the elimination of the at-large seats. Why do we wanna picket that scab again, when council needs to concentrate on far more important issues, like a public works facility, staffing, fire station, staffing, police department staffing, and possible substations? I support at-large seats for the following reasons. Our elections can be polarizing. At-large counselors can advocate for the supporters that defeated candidates when they're underserved by the victor. At-large counselors can advocate for issues that may conflict between various districts. Example, priority for where to place the next fire station park, or where or not in my backyard project should be located. And there is having value in having counselors looking across district lines. Mr. Murray just spoke. Mr. Murray has run on the campaign twice of district, redistricting as part of his platform. First as a District Three counselor, and as a at-large counselor. The voters did not accept that component of his agenda. That says something. It said something in twenty fifteen when we rejected it, and he advertised it very heavily. I think there's a message there, folks. In regards to redistricting, if you're talking about it and you wanna come up with six districts or whatever, it needs to be done by professionals, not amateurs. It needs to have people who are trained in allocation of population, allocation of geography, et cetera, as opposed to, thank you for cutting me off, as opposed to achieving an agenda or, "We can get twenty-five people up, I can get another twenty-five people up," who could say, "I'm against it." So what have you gained? Okay, it should not be done by having a whole bunch of people show up, and they all stand up, and rustle their skirts and say, "I'm upset, I'm upset, I'm upset, I want this, I want that." Y'all have to make the decision. Don't throw it out and depend on twenty-five people, okay? That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Good evening. My name is Christine King Harris, and I'm speaking tonight regarding the Charter Review Committee. Its ad hoc status, one alternative made in nineteen eighty-eight was that of the redevelopment plan. And it was adopted by the state, approved through the federal government as a way to implement equity throughout this region. Mount Dora was the first city to put redevelopment into action, and has maintained it since that time. So this is our thirtieth year. Redevelopment meant a standard for justice, equality in representation in the neighborhood, the public, as well as the other outside, the, out of what you call city limit, residents also had an opportunity to participate. So Charter Review includes redevelopment, which is a federal issue. Annexation is another. That was handled to the third congressional district, our annexation of all the areas within the redevelopment district. And so, in order to change anything in our charter, or amend anything in any of these areas, redevelopment is the overriding plan. It has worked for us in being able to finance all the things we do inside of Mount Dora, as well as in the four forty-one corridor. So I caution you in talking about amending the charter. We can review the charter and develop some areas within it that have not been dealt with. So we're looking to enhance those areas that have not yet been touched because we're advancing because of redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Any more comments? Mr. Ralston?
I believe that because we have elections coming up this October, November, that we need to move ahead with the one, you know, outside imposed requirement, which is the canvassing board. So I would move that we have an, have a draft ordinance prepared, because I think that's something that we can, you know, we can all agree on. We have to, we have to address this, because the supervisor of elections has mandated it. However, I agree with Mr. Massey that this is something that we can, is appropriate, that we deal with by ordinance. I know lots of other cities have it as an ordinance. It could, it could be incorporated later into our charter when we do a Charter Review, but I think that time is of the essence here, and I would like to move that we bring to the council at the earliest opportunity a draft ordinance to address the canvassing board issue.
Do the motions out of order until we deal with this one.
I thought we, I thought we-
We didn't vote it.
Didn't, hold on. No, no.
We voted not to table.
No, no, you're-
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. We have had a lot of discussion, and I have lost the train there. Okay.
This is out of order, and not because it's not a bad motion, but because it's out of order.
Understand, but like I said, I've lost the train of the discussion.
Suggestion, not a motion.
Pardon?
It's a suggestion.
I will hold in advance.
Okay. Any other comments now on the motion that we have, and which, if you would repeat it again, because I got kind of mixed up going now, so.
Motion was made by Councilmember Ralston for City Council to implement a seven-member Charter Review Ad hoc Committee to consider three issues mentioned in the memo for appointments to be made at the first meeting in March two thousand eighteen, and recommendation report to City Council by the first meeting in June of two thousand eighteen. Vice Mayor Hoaks, second.
Pretty close. Okay, is there, as the motion, is there any other comment from council? Okay, everyone, go ahead, please.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Hoaks?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
No.
Mr. Crail?
No.
Mr. Massey?
No.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, then the motion's defeated.
Yeah, just a little question I can ask our manager. Could you check, Ms. Hayes, what the date is when the decennial census becomes- Could you check, Ms. Hayes, what the date is when the decennial census becomes official? Just because I know it's supposed to start in two thousand, excuse me, in twenty twenty, but when is it final and when can rely on the numbers that would be presented? It may be after the five-year requirement that we do that, I just want to check on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. And do you still like to make a motion at this point?
I would.
Okay, I want you to do it again.
Um, I move.
On this issue here.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion that at the earliest possible opportunity that a draft ordinance to address the mandatory implementation of a, identification, implementation of a canvassing board be brought to council. So.
Did you repeat it again? I'm sorry.
Then the question to me real quick was, since it's not an agenda item, do we entertain additional motions? But it was related to another issue that we were discussing, so.
I didn't hear the motion and it was saved because I was looking at this stuff.
Ms. Council, repeat the motion real quick. Thank you.
Motion was made by council member Tillot to direct staff to prepare a draft ordinance to address the canvassing board for elections. Council member Tucker seconded it. Yet, since it's not covered and advertised as part of this item, I would say that would be a form of.
I thought it was, it was the third item to be discussed.
As a charter review. The third?
Might I suggest.
The first item, the first.
Mayor Mans suggested.
A first item, I mean, yeah.
An alternative. Not at risk of having it objected to either by the public or any member here, your motion, Ms. Tillot. What if there's just a consensus that that issue be put on the next agenda and leave it to our mayor and our city manager to finalize it?
That would be fine.
Let me ask for you to pull your motion in a second.
I would, I would withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw. Okay, and if there's no objection from the council, I'd like to direct the city manager to draft the, to go ahead and draft the proper ordinance for review for the site.
And that was my point in bringing it up, that we follow the proper process since it was not agenda.
Good point, yes. Okay, fine. Thank you all for helping and being part of the process. Thank you on that.
May I ask one question, Mayor? Can I add it with council's blessing in the respect that the next meeting is a work session? Can we add it as a discussion item to make sure that we have the right language and then add it as a follow-up in the approval of the meeting afterwards? Obviously, it would be based on the discussion item during the meeting so that you have an opportunity to talk about what we present you as to the canvassing board restrictions and so forth because it will be an ordinance?
Makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
That would be great. And as usual, something like this, if there's language that you can.
Forward ahead of time.
And so on, if you can get it to us so that we have several days to book it over, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so we're done with our discussion items. City manager, it's your, it's your turn?
Your turn, all right, really. It's all by yourself.
I hear the orders.
Are we?
I'm starting to get the next one.
That's it.
You are next.
Board appointments next, so the introduction of the commission and board appointments made by the city council commission and boards for the two-year terms, to serve two-year terms for the public arts commission. We have for District One available position as well, well as the mayor, and I imagine both of you would like to speak about that, so I'll turn that over to you, Mayor.
Okay, the public arts commissioners, how many points we have? We have Mayor's appointment?
Mayor's and District One.
And District One.
And they're both presented in your packet as well as the public arts commission update.
So, Ms. Thompson?
Oh, let me fill first?
I could if you like.
Um, I have an, I have an opening on the public arts commission with the departure of Stuart Bussian and I am, would like to appoint Caitlin Zill to that position.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to make my appointment to Mr. Tom Decker to, to that appointment, to the public arts commission.
Second.
Then the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Decker? You're on there. Thanks for volunteering. Okay, that concludes that, city, you have any other items, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council, I'll be quick. There are a couple items that are outstanding. As several of you are aware, we have the old, the wall that runs along all four forty-one has been in some disrepair of, of recent years. John Peters has been able to reach out through our initial work from our Parks and Rec team Dano and we've, I believe, we're at least on the road to obtaining all the proper permits to work with the county and to paint that wall. That's just, the county painted it last time. It's about an eight thousand dollar endeavor because there's pressure cleaning and, and sandblasting and so forth, but we will be going down that road very shortly and police will be assisting when we need to close the area. So that's just coming up, so I wanted to let you know. We've also very recently added to our website some street line maintenance and the map of our area, which our electric company, Electric Utilities cover service so that everyone is aware of, of the areas that are part of that process. We had Charles Rebels in, if you remember, several weeks back and he brought in sample lights and we talked about the downtown maintenance of those lights and so forth. And so we've just put that information out there for anyone and everyone to look at and it's available to you. We are also in the final testing of a work order that you can access either from a mobile device or from the website to put in a work order requesting a light to be replaced or whatever it might be, a pothole to be filled, whatever it might be. So that information's out there also, so we'll have that available very shortly to implement. I'd also like to take just a moment and do two things, introduce our interim finance director, Thomas Klinker, who is a CPA, CGMA, a CGFOA and a CGFO and a CPFO, and I'll let him talk about it. He does, he's very credentialed. I will say that John McKinney has, was fortunate to be offered a position at another city as their assistant city manager. It's closer to home, about a twenty-minute drive versus an hour fifteen-minute drive. So timing for that for John has worked out well, so we wish him well. And Mr. Klinker has very willingly, thank goodness, accepted the position of the interim finance director and I'd like for him to give you just a brief bio of his.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Tom Klinker. I have around thirty-eight years of experience in local government finance, most of it at the county level. I have six years' experience at the city of Leesburg early in the two thousands, which is also an electric utility city. I actually had the privilege of serving on both the FMBA and FMPA boards of directors and executive committees during that time period. I thought I was retired and then Mr. McKinney and Ms. Hayes called me and convinced me otherwise that I needed a new hobby, so I suppose that's why I'm here. So I won't belabor it, I'll be glad to talk with any of you about any of my credentials. I know that it's late hour and you have to answer any questions that you might have too.
You're just welcome to help.
Welcome. Ms. Hayes, you're okay?
Actually, actually, I guess I was supposed to say, Thomas P. Klinker, eight three four Palm, I'll record Leesburg. Sorry for that, I didn't observe the protocol.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Nice to have you.
A couple of quick updates. I'll have the strategic plan at the March work session with all the changes we made at the January work session. Dr. Richard Levy will be joining us for the March work session. We intend, probably at that point forward, he'll attend each meeting. At the February work session, we actually will bring to you Ernie Mulder's, his video, so we'll have a part of the economic development piece as part of that work session, but I want to go through that presentation. And then just an update, as all of you may be aware, we were, had Bentley Engineering firm out looking at our Kmart facility as a hopes of a, a facility to use for temporary purposes. They came in with quite of an extensive cost to, to move into that building, either even from a short-term period to a long-term period. There were problems with the foundation, HVAC, cooling, site improvements, et cetera. So I believe at this point in time, it's best to continue the course, continue to bring to you the public works facility, purchase, or building it in the current site and possibly having to look again at building it maybe in place as it is and working around the current buildings that we need to keep there to maintain our current day-to-day activities. So I just wanted to update you on that progress and where we, where we were in that process. We were hoping to be able to save quite a bit of money in use of the facility, but long-term does not look like it's feasible. So I believe those are the only items that have been addressed that I was asked to bring back, so thank you.
So, that's, there you go. So the attorneys, your board.
I think I've recorded back on everything for the items and nothing else.
Okay. And Mr. Crayle, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Mr. Ward, congratulations on your recent award, man of the century, what was it? Anyway, well, well deserved, thank you for your commitment to the community. I had occasion to speak with one of the board members of the Arts Council, am I saying that by sponsors of the art fair last weekend, and he had nothing but good things to say about police, fire, you know, maintenance, everything. He, he was elated and I, I think a lot of congratulations to all who made that happen. And finally, although the old Kmart site didn't work out, I think that's exactly the kind of creativity, you know, looking, but double checking to make sure. I, I just think that was a good process and, and work well done and, and you're right, now we scratch that off the list and get back to, you know, getting a good facility. But I think that was time well spent and a, a great idea. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson? Also, just a couple of things, as far as the arts festival goes, it was, it was, it was great and the shuttles worked hard and the tent captains worked hard and, and, and everybody worked well together. We collected a large amount of money for the Babe Ruth, it was donations, Babe Ruth Youth Baseball League as well as the project graduation for the high school, which is a wonderful thing to keep kids off the streets at graduation. So I was really happy to be a part of that. Just two things, one, the African-American History Festival this Saturday at Colley Lot Park from ten to five and hopefully everybody on council will be part of the parade. I'm going to go buy candy tomorrow because I passed out candy the last time, but so I'm probably expected to do it again. The second thing is just, there's a big tree down over Alexander Stream at Gilbert Park and I know I had, had mentioned this to our city manager. It's not impeding the flow of water, but I, there were a couple of kids yesterday who were playing Paul Bunyan on it and it kind of worried me that, that that could be a slip and fall hazard, so I was wondering if we could get that moved up on the to-do list. Yeah, there's not that much water in the stream and there's rocks down under there and I just worry somebody's going to slip off of that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothson.
Thank you, Mayor. Four things, I was pleased to be a part of our manager and our mayor and our vice mayor, Oziah in Tallahassee, and we had very good meetings with our state senators and representatives on issues important to this city, including home rule issues, VBRB and all the other issues that are pending with the legislature. There is still a move, I hate to beat a dead horse, but there's still a move to try to take away our home rule rights gradually and sometimes not so gradually. It's, some, some are insidious, but some are blunt, you know, a legislation that bluntly says you can't do that and I believe in violation of our state constitution that absolutely permits cities to have home rule rights, which, as you know, in my previous forwarding speeches is the closest thing to the people, is our city's rights for home rule. So it was a good meeting and I was honored to be with everybody and I believe we made an impact, I knew, I felt we did. It's a good thing to do and by the way, we have a superb, highly respected lobbyist that we funded to help us with that, with that process. Number two, I want to, and it's been said before, but I intend to repeat it, I want to thank John Peters for all the work he has done and his staff and his crew on the Dogwood Mountain area. And I think the homeowners there that are directly and seriously impacted have a good voice. And I think we're fortunate to have that and John's expertise, so, Mr. Peters, thank you very much and please convey at least my appreciation to your staff for doing all they do in that regard. Been said before, I think Ms. Tillot said that, Ozell Ward has had my personal congratulations, but I want to publicly congratulate the citizen of the year, Ozell Ward. He's also a prominent person in my district, so I need to treat him with respect. And he's also on the Northeast CRA board that'll be coming up shortly, so well done and high recognition, well deserved. And positive art festival, in, in my view, Shirley and I couldn't go to it all because we were parking cars at Hopscotch for Lake Here's Food Pantry and she again graciously donates that lot for that purpose and we were happy to help out for a half a day there. But it was, and I tried to make a point of talking to vendors, are you treated well? You know, how are, what are your, what are your comments? And to the vendor, I bet I had talked to two dozen of them and every single one was very pleased, so if Chris and his crew was here, I would give.
Chris is back there.
There he is, back there, I didn't see it, Chris. Well done. Please convey my views and Shirley's view about the positive feedback on how the vendors feel they're receiving. All positive, they loved the breakfast, they talked about the breakfast they had at, at our park here, Donnelly Park and it was all, all positive. The, the little, the few negatives, where there were signage for dogs, no dogs allowed, was a little belated in getting there and there were a lot of dogs running around that were sometimes posed a bit of a problem, that's been, being addressed, I know that. And then people walking back on Fifth Avenue would still walk on the street where cars were there, there were a couple of closed calls, I've talked to the police department, Ivy and others about that, so they're aware of that. Those are small, small issues compared to the very, very successful art fair, so congratulations to our manager and, and to Chris and all those who work under her to make this world renowned. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes, I'll be very brief. Again, Ozell, congratulations. Thank you. Well deserved. The next thing with the art festival, y'all, Mr. Tillot, you had a glorious job driving carts and everything and.
Yes, with the windshields are us, with the, with.
Sarand wrap!
And there's nothing that a roll of sarand wrap and a roll of duct tape cannot fix.
That's why I didn't ride with you. I wanted glass.
Nobody had windchills.
The, and again, Mr. Alson, parking the cars. I did volunteer with my bride and we made a lot of vendors are happy. One thing that the art festival does, evidently a lot of festivals not, provide booth relief and if you want to make somebody happy, when you approach them, you got your little sign that says booth relief and their legs are crossed because they haven't been able to leave their booth for two hours and they got some coffee in them, they like it, they, they like the booth relief, it's a great.
Several commented to me on that very thing, I'm going to see what these.
Yeah, booth relief really goes over good. And I'll be extremely brief because somewhere between now and a few hours from now, I'm going to become a grandfather, so.
Where are you going to take your grandchildren?
When I can get out of here tonight, I'll be by the phone. can get out of here tonight, I'll be by the phone.
I consult if you're interested, I have some experience in that area.
My youngest.
I got that promotion a few weeks back, there's some of great grandfathers in that, so.
Well, I give him more advice than he can, so.
You're a great grandfather?
Now, does that mean great as in four generations, or you just like great-grandfather?
I don't know what you want to use it, that's all. I just have, we wanted to call you to pop off this, I says, you know, your excellency is good, you know, that's why you're just, you don't fight the mayor? No, the mayor's fine, you know, but that can be, you know, changed after a while, but should never know about that.
No, once a mayor, always a mayor.
Always the mayor, you guys, so, thank you. Well done?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
I too will be brief. Since I last met with you all, I have attended the Florida League of Cities Institute for newly-elected municipal officials. Great program, I enjoyed it so much, I've signed up to attend the advanced EMO in the near future. Florida League of Cities does an excellent job preparing newly-elected officials, it's great. Second thing is that I now understand how a small city entertains thousands of visitors at the art festival each year, and in my view, it's because the 14,000 residents, more or less, of Mount Dora participate in the background, making that happen. My wife and I had the chance to work with the Arts Council, and we had breakfast Sunday morning beginning at 5:30, so it was an interesting time. We talked to artists, vendors, and a very, very pleasant day. Thank you, Mount Dora.
Ms. Hope?
Okay, I'll ditto everything that everyone said, and I got the opportunity today to listen to Ozell and Judy Jones discuss going to school in Mount Dora during the days of segregation at the Rotary Club, but while I was there then, I got politic and was kind of nudged and said, hey, the town of Taveries has a dragon boat team, the town of Houston, how come the town of Mount Dora doesn't have one? And I said, I don't know, but I will take the flyer, and it's probably a little late for us to have a team, but, but everyone know, I mean, I'm sure, no, Jim, right, yeah, I know, well, some of your buddies cornered me before I got out of that room. Anyway, it is March 10th down at Wooton Park in Taveries, and it's the, I'm looking through the year, but it's many years, Dragon Boat Race, do you know how many years it is, Jim?
I think 16.
16, okay, well, anyway, that is on March 10th, so I've done my thing, what I told him I would do.
And all equipment paid.
There is an event this Thursday, though, I want to bring to everyone's attention, if you happen to be out and about, it's called the Empty Bowls Event with the food pantry. We are doing it at Wooton Park this year, and it's where you pay $10 for an armband, and you come down and you get an empty bowl, and you can go around with your ticket, and we have, I don't know whether it's 12 or 15 restaurants and purveyors there, serving soup that will fill your bowl, and all of the proceeds goes to Lake Hurst Food Pantry. So that's Thursday from 6 to 8 o'clock in Wooton Park in Taveries.
Kathy, I think there were about 17.
17 now?
Carol's been working on it.
Okay.
I think 17 or 18, they were trying to get up to 20.
We want it 20, so we've been working real hard at it, very good, thank you. Carol, thank you, Carol's been helping us with it. I do, I also did like, a lot, a number of people up here worked this weekend, I was a tent captain, and I got the opportunity to work both here at Baker and Sixth, and then I did Gilbert Park. I think the thing that I want to share, and I know the council knows this because several of you do it, but what, as we've had this discussion about parking and, and looking at how we do different things, one of the things I found in, in being a volunteer with the shuttle is I'm looking forward to the volunteer meeting, which we're going to have one tomorrow and/or one Thursday, you only have to go to one, and sharing a number of my observations and what I think will be things that will help improve the program also, and I think that's part of the benefit of, of people volunteering for that, and then having the follow-up meeting, which Gracie and, and our young man in the back there, sitting in the corner, has put together so that we can share what we've learned, and perhaps as we do it, improve it, and I, and I think that's why I feel so strongly that as we start these different programs, that we make sure we gather our data and then have the opportunity to discuss and improve them each time, because it's that learning curve that's going to make it better. And, so I just share that with you. Also, working on the Mount Dora Heroes Foundation Golf Tournament's coming up on April 13th, Friday the 13th, out at the Country Club of Mount Dora, and we're just beginning the work on that, had our first committee meeting, any other volunteers that might want to step up and help us, I'm sure we're always looking for volunteers, and I believe it's either the 16th or 17th annual, I'll always track after it gets way up there. And I think I've covered all my little goodies here, so I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so real quick, again, the art festival was a, again, very, very great success, and proud of everybody who participated in it, and it was just great, and we've been congratulating Mr. Ward tonight on winning the citizen of the year, volunteer of the year, I think it was, citizen?
Volunteer.
Volunteer of the year, volunteer of the year award, congratulations on that, but we neglected to mention a company here in Mount Dora who also won the best business of the year.
Yes.
Mount Main Street Lees. Congratulations on that, and that's, that's the nicest thing, honor to get from the whole community, congratulations. And the art fair, and everybody did their little bit of volunteering and things like that, and just want you to know that I was downtown doing, my ambassadorship kind of work downtown, and where I just walk around and I go greet the vendors, and, and all the different ones that I can, shake hands with them, find out, basically thank them for their participation, one way or the other, and it's amazing, it seemed like all of the numbers were, it seemed like it was almost like split, new ones, and ones who came from Reed people, we had a lot of new people there, and everybody, consistent remarks, whether old or new, what a place to be, and, you know, here in Mount Dora for the art festival, people come from, it is, and we don't advertise as much as an international, I think we just call it the Mount Dora, but it is basically an international art festival, and, and I was living in Jersey, a friend of mine, when I mentioned that, he, when I was moving down here, he says, oh, Mount Dora, he says, we go there whenever we want to buy a piece of original art, we come down for the art festival in February, whenever we want to buy a piece of original art, we do, we come down for that festival. So he does like maybe every two or three years, he's on, comes on down. But anyway, no, it's a great, it was a great event, and also, and we were talking about the, our group going to Tallahassee this past week, and it was, it was enlightening, I'll tell you what, it was a very, very well-received, very where we went, and, but I think the highlight of our little excursions throughout the Capitol Building was when we decided to, we weren't scheduled, we did not have a scheduled appointment with Ms. Sullivan, but we decided we're going to walk in anyway, just to see, and she wasn't there, so her aide was very nice and talking with us, and was going down a list of things that Mr. Ralston had his list of things that we're talking about, so he was, she was giving us an update on where the bills were standing. So in walks Jennifer, right at that point, Ms. Sullivan, she walks in, and, and she stayed there, and she, she chatted with us while the other, our aide was getting the information, and that little chat lasted for about a half an hour.
At least a half an hour.
And I'll tell you, that was, you know, unannounced, and spur of the moment, and to get a legislature, a legislator to talk with you for that long and to address your concerns, and somebody who's sympathetic with our area also, and our concerns here in this area, was, was really an honor, and so...
Usually you get five or 10 minutes.
Oh, if even that, and, well, actually, a lot of times you get that five minutes, and you, you talk to them, you know they're not listening to you. Half the time, they don't listen, but, but Mr. Ralston did most of it, he was doing the lead on the, on all the other things that were with us, and, and they, they were listening when he talked, they, they listened, I think they, I think that the guy that was standing by to make sure that they listened. But other than that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and going to call and order the Northeast CRA Board.